Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five City of Gardner Planning Commission meeting to order. Can you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with Commissioner Roll Call, beginning at my right.
Commissioner Landsberg, present.
Commissioner Von der Schmidt, present.
Commissioner Soza, present.
Commissioner Combs, present.
Commissioner Junen, we have a quorum. Move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, an item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the Planning Commission or the applicant. We have two items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Planning Commission would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Combs, a second by Commissioner Soza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to regular agenda, item number one, wireless communications facility. This is a public hearing item. We have a staff presentation or the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Gardner Planning Commission. My name is Curtis Holland. My address is nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Suite nine hundred, Kansas City, Missouri. Here on behalf of MW Towers, the proposed developer-owner of the communication facility with me here on behalf of MW Towers is Paul Rablica. Anyway, I appreciate you all hearing us tonight. Did want to thank staff for their work with us and getting us to this, to this place tonight. I know that, you know, we've worked very hard with them to get our site plans in order. This is a fairly routine, sort of easy application by standards. These standards, you know, communication facilities can sometimes be challenging here. We found a great location. We're actually subleasing or leasing a piece of the City of Gardner substation property at one six five zero zero Waverly. And so we're going to blend right in with the substation property with our structure. It's a hundred-foot-tall monopole, which is relatively short for communication facilities. It's being constructed and developed for our, the primary carrier in this case is AT&amp;T Wireless. So we'll have a tenant here providing good quality, you know, wireless service to this area of the, of the city. And again, thanks staff for their help getting us to this point. We are in support of all the stipulations, agree to all the stipulations. We're here to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we'll probably hold off on questions.
Sure.
All right, staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
So MW Towers LLC is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a one-hundred-foot-tall communications tower located at sixteen five hundred Waverly Road. It is located near the Megan Valley neighborhood and is on the Gardner Electric Substation property. It is currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential and is also surrounded on the north, south, and west by single-family residential. And to the east is County Rural Residential zoning. This is the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, and it labels the property as utilities and is surrounded by low resident, low-density residential. The applicant will lease a fifty-foot by fifty-foot piece of property to the north of the substation and will be accessed from Waverly Road by an extension of the existing gravel drive. The tower will be located in the center of the leased area and is one hundred and sixty-two feet from the Waverly Road right-of-way and one hundred and twenty-six feet from the lot line to the north. None of the existing trees will be removed from the site. The site plan layout shows the tower as the circle right in the center. It'll be surrounded by a six-foot-tall treated wooden fence with three strands of barbed wire on top, and will have landscaping consisting of white pine trees around the outside of the fence. There is no building proposed onsite, and instead there are four leased areas within the fenced area for the carriers to be able to co-locate. The tower will be of a monopole design without support wires and will be painted gray. The main structure will be one hundred feet tall with an additional ten-foot-tall lightning rod on top. The applicant provided two perspective views of the proposed tower. This view is from Waverly Road looking west, and this view is from West one hundred and sixty-fifth Terrace, the cul-de-sac, and is also, or is looking north. The tower is shown in the center between the two houses. Staff finds that, within the Land Development Code, a new communications tower requires a conditional use permit in all zoning districts. The project is consistent with the various policies in the Comprehensive Plan to support future growth, and it complies with the requirements of Chapter seventeen point eleven in the Land Development Code. There's one motion needed for this item, and the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the governing body for conditional use permits. Staff recommends approval with seven conditions. The first is for the expiration of the conditional use permit. The code requires approval terms to be a minimum of ten years for new cell towers, and the recommended condition is that the tower is approved for the minimum of ten years but does not expire as long as a lease is approved for continued use. Conditions two through six are to ensure the site meets code requirements, and condition seven is there just in case the lease needs to be revised due to the stormwater treatment. Staff's available for any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Any Commissioners have any questions before we move into the public hearing? Since this item requires a public hearing, we will now open the public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak regarding this item, please write your name. If you haven't already done so, write your name on the sign-in sheet. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the public record. Individuals, speakers will have three minutes. A speaker representing a group such as an HOA will be allotted seven minutes. Please address your comments and any questions to the Planning Commission. Any questions raised by those speaking will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. Seeing as no one is approaching the podium, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Combs, with a second by Commissioner Landsberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, now we'll move into Commissioner and discussion, and we'll begin on my right.
I guess my main question for the applicant or the staff, either of the, the tower, or the pole, is further from Waverly and closer to the neighbor, the northern lot? Why is it closer to the lot? If I'm a homeowner, I'd rather have that a little further away from you. Is there a reason why it's a distance from the most established versus the distance to the house?
I think Kurt Holland here on behalf of the applicant. I think the, our folks, our team met with the city and onsite and decided that this was be the, probably the best location for it. So, you know, proximity-wise, there's no real magic to it. We weren't trying to get close, further away from the street and closer to the residents. There's some good screening behind that property, so I don't think it's going to affect them too much. It's actually a fairly, you know, decent buffer. And with the screening of the facility on the bottom with the wood fencing and the shrubbery and trees we're going to put there, I think it'll be fine there. We haven't had any question or issue from the residents about it. We gave notice to everybody, and there weren't any objections to the location, but I appreciate the question.
I don't have any questions either.
I do just, point of clarification, keep this visual up, because I know you just represented it, and it's in front of me. I just want to make sure I'm saying what I'm saying is accurate. So the one hundred and twenty-six feet to the north property line, that is in fact the one home that we saw, I think, from one hundred and sixty-fifth Terrace in the cul-de-sac that you took the picture from. And I'm not a communications or radio frequency expert. However, one hundred and twenty-six feet in general, in my research in this project, seems really close. Are there, maybe this is to the applicant, it helped me feel better. As you have built these monopoles in other locations, is this proximity at all similar to some of those other builds? Or would you look at this and think it's a little close to a resident?
So we have literally thousands of tower structures across the country. I've been involved in hundreds of them. This is not too close by any means in comparison to other facilities. And the property itself, you know, is used as a substation property, so there's some tall transmission poles out there. They're, I mean, I don't know if they're taller, they're as tall or almost as tall, but they're, I think several of them are even closer to the property than, say, our facility would be, so. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not going to be an issue, so.
So that distance in general is just making me feel comfortable, is quite common in your thousands?
Yes, they're even closer, in some cases, they're closer, so.
Okay.
Right.
No other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question clarification as well. I think staff, you said it was painted gray. Is it going to be painted or is it going to be galvanized?
It's galvanized, yeah, so, thank you for that question.
Okay, yeah, so it might be a little bit shinier at the beginning and then it will be more gray.
It won't be shiny.
It'll get a nice patina.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all the questions I had. Could we bring the proposed motion back up on screen? Thank you.
I'll make a motion. The Planning Commission recommends approval of a conditional use permit for a communications facility tower for wireless services on seven point eight-eight acres located at one six five zero zero Waverly Road with the following conditions, items one through seven as outlined in the staff report.
Just clarification, we are recommending approval on this one, not? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Von der Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving on, we have item number two, New Life Christian Academy. This is a rezoning, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, final development plan, and final plat. This item also requires a public hearing. And I believe Commissioner Von der Schmidt, you were going to recuse yourself from the side.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we have the applicant here for a presentation.
Hi, my name is Will Dubois. I'm with Davidson Architecture and Engineering. And we also have Michael Ward with New Life Christian Academy and also Kevin Lee with Polsonelli. Just to give you a brief overview on this project, we're very excited. New Life, within the New Life Building, New Life Christian Academy is operating and is growing at a very quick rate. We're proposing giving them their own facility to continue this growth that is in very high demand. It's a multi-phase project. Phase one is what will be built immediately, and that involves elementary school. But the full build-out, phase one through four, involves a middle school and involves a high school, and then some special-use buildings like a vocational school and special education facilities. Our staff has worked closely with us on this project, so I know that their report, what we read through, it looks really good. I know they're, I don't want to overspeak on them on some of the particulars, but I'll also let Michael Ward come up here and kind of talk about the vision that they have for the New Life Christian Academy at this location.
Hi there. So Michael Ward, our official title would be Founder and Board President. This started out years ago as a vision, and then as New Life Community Church has built our new church building. It just happened to coincide with this project where Pastor Rick George was like, why don't we just put rows of classrooms on our new building, and you guys can sublease from us? So we are technically a separate entity from New Life Community Church, but we named it New Life for the continuity, right? Now, what's been happening is, to Will's point, is demand and increased demand. And so we went from twenty-five students, this is our third year, twenty-five students, to fifty-six, to this year we're at eighty-five. Looks like we'll add a couple more, we usually add a couple throughout the year. So significant growth, we just sixty percent over the last year. We also just achieved accreditation. Usually it takes five to six years to gain accreditation from an ACSSI organization. We got that in less than two. And so as far as the amount of high-level that we are performing at, we are also growing and creating a pretty deep community. We have acquired twenty-five acres, which, you know, we're going through rezoning and things to, because we're growing out of the current church building. So great facilities that we're in right now. Unfortunately, if we continue to grow, we'll need more facilities. One other sign of that is that we had twenty, we have kept every class at twenty. We had thirty-five applicants for twenty kindergarten spots this year. So it might be just another couple of years until we open up a second section of kindergarten. And so when this is fully grown out, K through twelve, two sections per grade, it would be six hundred students is what the ultimate vision is, with like what he said, which is a vocational school. Interestingly enough about the vocational school, I won't speak a lot about that, but the Wall Street Journal has recently had a lot of articles around how AI is changing the landscape, about what is the white-collar jobs and what does AI do with that, and also the blue-collar jobs, vocational field, and how does that all play in? And so we feel like we are positioned perfectly to be able to have two tracks, a college prep track, but not a kind of secondary vocational side, but equally as important is that vocational side of things. So that's the vision that we have kind of going forward, which of course has great opportunities as far as internships with the community and a lot of different things like that. Much like New Life Community Church is very generous with their facilities, whether it comes to firefighters or funerals or whatever it is, we want to do the same thing. And so this new building is not just going to be for the school. As you know, gyms, for example, are always in short demand. My third graders two years ago had an eight, eight PM to nine PM basketball practice. Why? Because the gyms are so packed. So we are going to have, right out of the gate, phase one, have a gym that is a full-size regular gym, but also has two three-quarter courts with a drop-down barrier in the middle. So we could be running games on the weekends, practice during the week, things like that. It also is going to have a stage built in, so we would be able to host community events. Fighterfighters is the most recent banquet that New Life held, that's why it's top of mind to me, but things like that. And so we definitely want to continue that heritage of being for the community and something that the community can use at large. So I feel like, now, if it's not time to take questions, I'll pass it over to Kevin, or if those are later, you just let me know.
I think if you want to continue your presentation, I think we'll be okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Kevin Lee with the Polsonelli Law Firm appearing on behalf of New Life Christian Academy, Inc. Hopefully, Michael's presentation gives you some of the insight into the larger vision for what the project is, and I'm sure that you'll hear from staff on some of the particulars of the project and have that in your packets as well. The item I wanted to hit was the stipulations of approval, so we've reviewed those and are generally in agreement with all, with the exception of just a couple items that we would, wanted to discuss and would ask be modified accordingly. Neither of those are, we asking to be deleted entirely. It's purely about deferral, and we'd ask that they be kicked to a future phase if required then. So the first is dealing with turn lanes, and specifically the requirement to install a left-end turn lane with the first phase. We have a traffic study that we had conducted in connection with this that finds that neither a right end or a left end is warranted here. It also finds that ninety percent of our trips are coming from the east, and it's a very nominal impact coming from the west. And so, given that it finds there's acceptable, I think in one place it describes them as excellent levels of service at those intersections, especially the left-end movement, we would ask that that left-end turn lane be deferred to a future phase if required by an updated traffic study and not required with construction in the first phase. The other one similarly would be the sidewalk requirement along the north of one hundred and ninety-first Street. So that is, as it stands today, there's not a sidewalk to either side of us, and so it would effectively be a sidewalk to nowhere at this point. And so we would ask that that also be deferred to either the earlier of when that left-end turn lane is required or when those adjacent properties develop and would construct sidewalks. So happy to stand for any questions. Our traffic engineer was running from another meeting, so hopefully she will be here if you have questions that are deep in the weeds on the TIS, but would ask that we get your approval tonight with those two modifications. Thanks.
Do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
All right. Again, this is, these applications are for rezoning, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, final development plan, and final plat for the New Life Christian Academy School. Subject property is located on the north side of one hundred and ninety-first Street, approximately, approximately a thousand feet west of Locust. Plat includes three parcels that are combining into one lot and is comprised of approximately, again, twenty-five acres. All utilities are available to the site. The existing sanitary sewer line to service the first phase of development is being extended from a list station located to the north of the site. For future phases, updates to the list station may, may need to be made. Surrounding, the current zoning for the site is a agricultural and R U R rural residential. The surrounding zoning includes RP five, planned apartment to the north, C two and C three, commercial to the east, agricultural to the south, and Edgerton LP Logistics Park and County R L D residential, low-density. And school has a first-ride fusil on that property that is zoned R L D, which is depicted in, I think, like an extremely light brown. As mentioned in the staff report, the Conspicience Plan and I thirty-five Subbury Plan designate this property as regional commercial and light industrial. While the plan does not define this type of use within our descriptions of accessible uses, the school has a great transitional use between the industrial and commercial development to the west, east, and potentially to the south, and with the residential development to the north. The overall school development will include approximately one hundred and forty-two thousand square feet of buildings. The overall school development will include approximately 142,000 square feet of buildings for grades K through 12. The development will occur in four phases. First phase will include the elementary school and gymnasium. Second phase will include a middle school to the north. The third phase, to the west, includes the high school and Performing Arts Center. And the fourth phase includes two support buildings. The tech building in the northwest corner, and the special education building to the east of the elementary. Building materials for this facility will be tilt-up, wall, concrete, and brick. This slide shows the final development plan, which includes phase one and 1A. 1A is gymnasium. First phase of construction is approximately 40,000 square feet of classroom space, and as mentioned before, the gym. And here's the landscape plan, showing a tree-lined entrance drive, and then buffering to the south. As mentioned before, the buildings are mainly constructed, tilt-up wall construction with ample massing to the size to create form-scale proportions of building-shaped space around the school. This is accomplished through step acts and bump outs to reduce the amount of single-length of wall on any one facade. Staff finds with the proposed conditions, the plan reflects general accepted sound planning and design principles. The site is capable of accommodating the building use and other site design elements. The design arrangement of the building is consistent with good planning and landscaping design. The architecture and building design uses quality materials, and the style is appropriate for the context. The plan is in substantial compliance with the code. And I'll leave the staff recommendations. We will have three motions for this, for this project here. And I am available for questions, too. I guess one other point, we did have a possible, another condition that should be on the preliminary development plan. The additional condition will be access, access point stub to the east shall be gated and for emergency access only. Traffic impact studies shall be updated to recognize the eastern access point as emergency access only. Future phases of this development may require a secondary point of access.
So, the east being the secondary point of access, or the southwest future drive?
Let me, let me go back to the site plan real quick.
Clarify that.
So, here along the first phase, you see the, basically, it's orientated, north is the top, and east will be on your right-hand side. There's a lot of vacant ground, commercial ground to the east, to where an emergency access can be granted for fire, police, anybody that needs it, but would want that to be gated. And then, for the, let me go back to the preliminary development plan. So, the, and this was spelled out in the staff report, the property that is currently zoned, the low-density residential, it's in the county, it's shaded, rectangle space on the southwest side, basically just adjacent to where the detention basin is. They have the first ride refusal. If you can see the dash lines, it shows the secondary access coming up off of 191st Street into this project. We can't show it because they don't control it, it's not within the city, so we can't even really look at it, but they do have first ride refusal on the purchase of this property. The emergency access, again, will become, will be, actually, they depicted it on this preliminary development plan. If you can see the stub leading over to the east, we basically have told the developer that you can slide that sec, that emergency access point anywhere up and down along that east side. It just, we needed it to be gated and locked up in all, like with, for emergency services to access it, sort of like a Knox box or something like that. Okay.
I guess for the members of the commission, do you have any questions right now, or should we be okay with opening a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we will now open this public hearing. Same rules as before, individual speakers will have three minutes, individuals representing your group will have seven minutes. And then, any questions or concerns brought up will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. Seeing as no one is approaching the podium for the public hearing, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sosa, second by Commissioner Combs. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries five to zero. Okay, move into commissioner discussion, and we'll start on my left.
Bob, I hate to ask you to do this again, because you did so well, but can we talk about that, about the entrance, number one? And number two, the site is missing something. The deviations were not illustrated in the packet, and before any final decision up here, we want to make sure we understand what those are.
There wasn't.
Because I believe, and I'm so sorry, the applicant mentioned to, that I got, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, sorry. So, I will let you clarify your point.
Sure. At first, we thought there was going to be some deviations, basically, on parking, but after looking at the amount of parking that they had, they met the requirements, and they were within 10% of the maximum or minimum allowed. So, also, with this being a multi-phase project, I can see the advantages of doing a preliminary development plan because we still have three more phases to go. So, this would allow, if anything comes up that they needed deviation on the second through fourth phase, they'll be able to present that to the commission.
And the stub that we're looking at in the photo here, I think there's only one, I'll make sure, it's right in the middle between the number seven and 17 on there. Okay, perfect. When I look at the actual map, that goes into just openness, or is there a road that exists there?
No, but we, we were fully aware that eventually that land directly to the east will be developed, and by connecting the stub over to it, it'll allow that whoever develops that land will have, will connect up with this to allow for those emergency vehicles to access the site.
And so, that, that stub, at least on the property line, is where that gate that you're talking about would be?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. That, that's clear. I did have one other question, and we may have already talked about this, I just wanted to be clear. In the traffic study, it identified that the location doesn't meet criteria, and a variance is needed. Is that the points that we were just referring to about turning in?
I can speak to that briefly. There's kind of two, and you guys can tell me if I'm speaking incorrectly. The variance mentioned there has to do with the distances between adjacent properties' drives, where basically, in the code, you're supposed to space so far apart from your neighbor, essentially. There's a lot of drives on that area, kind of close together, and if this is considered arterial, you know, higher traffic amounts going faster, you typically have to spread out a little bit further. So, with our narrow frontage, and considering that in the future, we really want to have two drives, one of those is going to be out of compliance, and the current one with that right end ideally would be further west from the neighbors, but we're really kind of compressed with some of those existing conditions. Then separately, we were also, you know, we're committed to doing that right end. Then the sep, the separate one that we're talking about is the necessity at phase one to do the left end for traffic coming from the west. So, those are kind of those two different items.
Okay. Or correct me.
No, and then, you know, if you guys look at the entrance drive off 191st Street, the original submitted plans showed that drive coming straight down. After talking with the city engineer, he wanted a little further distance from the adjacent property. Also, that would allow for that, that right end for westbound traffic coming off of 191st Street into the school.
Makes sense. And would any of that need to be outlined, should we, you know, move to our approval process? I mean, are there conditions that we should be mentioning and pointing out, is my question?
Sir, in the staff report, there's a condition on the final development plan with the first phase, that both the left-in and right-in turn lanes shall be built with this phase, so that's one of them. The other, with respect to the sidewalk, I don't see as a condition. However, they would be required as part of their public improvements to install a sidewalk. Public improvements, it doesn't make sense necessarily to install a sidewalk at this time because it's not connecting to anything. Therefore, they would pay money in lieu of the construction into a future sidewalk. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes.
And so, we don't have to have it listed or call that out because of that?
Typically, we would, but it is also covered by the public improvement plans that are a separate set of documents that go into public works for the review right before construction.
I was thinking, yeah, we've had a vision.
Yeah.
We're being inconsistent if we are, you know, not constructing it now.
We're not necessarily being inconsistent because we have accepted the money in lieu of, or, I don't say accepted or requested. We recently did that last month in terms of not requiring sidewalks to be constructed with that development for the school district services.
Yeah, I would just add, do we, so, it's not unusual for us not to do sidewalks on an improved arterial. You know, we do quite often do, build sidewalks to where if we're confident it's, it's in good place and state, but on an improved arterial, we don't want to build something that in five, 10 years, you know, come up, white road, and have to redo it. It's, they're all just not even having.
I'm clear, I'm done, thank you.
Yeah, a question that I have, I had before Commissioner Combs kind of asked, all right, so, I'm good.
No question.
No question.
Just a point or clarification on the emergency access point, what's, what's the point of having it gated and getting access to it?
So, with all emergency accesses that we require, and we've, we have required quite, quite a few around the city, you heard me mention a Knox box. So, the fire department, all emergency services will have either a combination or a key to that Knox box to allow them in and through that emergency access. So, it's really only for emergency vehicles to be able to access that point.
How would we access it if the land next to it's not developed?
Well, they won't now, but when it does get developed, they can access it.
So, this basically gives the applicant the choice of where to place it?
That's.
For future development, we require to connect to that.
And that's atypical with the development of any adjacent parcels of land. The first one in really gets to decide where that kind of point is. So, the person who develops to the east of here will have to tie into that somehow, some way.
I just had some questions. It wasn't evident on the plan, but like I saw on the website that there is a proposed playground on the property, but it wasn't, didn't seem very big, at least not for a K through 12 school, and there was no, it didn't seem obvious to me that there was a playing field, kind of a fenced-in playing field either that you would normally see with a school. Can you speak to why that was not on the site? Because it seems kind of important to have that for children's school.
Absolutely, definitely is. So, an apologies if it wasn't very apparent in the plans, it is just to the east of the elementary wings. It is fenced in, and, you know, we don't, that playground equipment, the exact design and everything to be determined in the future. New Life has some great relations with a bunch of, well, current parents and stuff that might donate some of that equipment. So, we kind of left that area open as far as like what the exact equipment would be, but hey, here's this fenced-in area, this turf area that they can use from the, from day one. Does that kind of answer the question?
Yeah.
Where, where it is?
Yeah, I, yeah, see, kind of in between, you know, there's bubble number, number 11 there, it's kind of just, just off that bubble there.
Yeah, it's just there, and then if you're on the elevations page, just to the east, it, there's kind of a low, you know, metal fence, so it looks nice.
Yep.
It's controlled access, that kind of thing, directly from the elementary wings.
Yeah, it just, to me, it seemed noticeably smaller than other schools, you know, that we have in the area, so I just didn't know if, like, if there's kids are going to have recess, you know, potential capacity of 600 students here, I mean, they won't all have recess at the same time, obviously, but like, it seems.
Really, it's just the elementary school, so 600 kids aren't going to play on that, just the elementary school.
Okay. So, how many?
Middle school's not going to be using that, high school is going to be using that, and so, upfront, in phase one, is really more of what we're important. That's a plenty large playground for phase one, which you think K through, K through five, the sixth grade, 120 kids. That's definitely enough for 120 children to use. Now, maybe like you're saying, we get two sections and we grow, maybe that does need to be adjusted to some degree, that's, that's fair, but.
And I'll say, we've also been working, New Life Christian Academy has had the opportunity, we've had a good working relationship with Marinatha, who has been going through lots of expansion lately, and kind of outgrowing their current building and doing additions. And so, we've been kind of seeing, okay, what worked, where do they not have enough room? And that's kind of how we've arrived at a lot of the size, both of the building, parking, how that queuing works, like just, hey, where were your pinch points that you had, that you just went through? And so, that's how we've arrived at this, but that's also, you know, why we're going with PDP, and then we'll come back in with the FTP as, you know, needed, you know, hey, maybe we, maybe we'll need to become bigger at some point, but there is a lot of room to grow out here on this piece of land, too.
Yeah, I mean, you say there's room to grow, but to me, it looks pretty, pretty tight. And if there is room to grow on this site, I mean, it's that southwest corner, and then you're going to have to have kids go all the way across a parking lot to go, if you're going to have a field, a field of some kind of play, like kickball or something, put that on. So, I, I, that was, that was one concern, one question I had, I just see it kind of tight, very developed, you know, for the site.
I think also in phase one, that, the special education is not going to be there until phase four.
Correct.
And so, that's the very last thing to go, so now you've got, so, it's in kind of, let's just say it this way, we've used our imagination a lot the past three years as far as what to do and how to, how to do recess, because we didn't want to put any equipment in the ground right now, because once you put it in the ground, you can't dig it up and move it for insurance purposes. So, that's why we've actually just been using a field, so that whole thing that looks like a special education building is just going to be a wide-open field until, for, you know, 10 years.
But would it be fenced in, like, you know, you know, like a typical school would be, or it just, it's just kind of?
It, it could be upfront, it won't be, but like, right now, we don't play in a fenced-in area. We have teachers that are on all corners, but we don't have a fenced-in area right now to play in, so.
But the plan will be for it also to be turf for, you know, more year-round, you use, make it look nice. And then also, I will say, because we can technically include that southwest corner, you know, we can't put stuff like the special building over there, but you know, if, hey, that whole area is to be used as a playground, New Life Christian Academy has a relation with that property owner, so it's not, you know, nothing's official, of course, or anything like that, but feeling pretty good that that is a viable option to possibly move some programming in the future. Not necessarily, like you said, yeah, you don't want to bring kids across that parking lot, but a building that's occupying a future spot could be down there.
I guess I would say this, too. You have to take care of your first thing first. The first thing first is the elementary school. The secondary, special education.
The secondary is special education. Right, we don't even have that yet, that's a fourth program. So if that ends up being something that, you know what, you're right, we have to push into that land, um, we can either move special education to that southwest corner when we own that or if that just does not happen because we had to use that space and that is what it is. But you have to think, in, in terms of priorities is what we're thinking. Priority one is elementary school and our core school. So.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know if that, if your question had anything to do with sports either, so we're not going to have any fields or sports or anything like that.
Correct, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't like, you know, where's the track and field at? You know, I wasn't, wasn't assuming that, you know, and I'm not saying you guys didn't have a football field there, but just, I, I think it's a generally accepted norm that a school would have an open field for play, uh, for, for children just because it's, it's good for their health to be able to play outside for recess and not always inside in a gym or, and, and just making sure that there's adequate room for the amount of students that you guys are projecting for. So that was, that was the essence of my question.
I agree.
Next question would be, I guess, for staff. I guess, future land use map, you say this parcel was light, industrial and commercial, but I didn't see any commercial on, you know, on the future land use map that I was looking at, either on the subarea plan or it didn't seem like there was commercial for this property. So I guess, can you explain, you know, what the inherent assumptions and differences between a light industrial, future land use and a commercial, like a C three industrial, uh, commercial land use would be?
Why, sure, I should be able to do that.
I assume there's inherent.
Yeah, on the, uh, on the, uh, the I thirty five Gardner Road Subarea Plan, uh, which is a, basically an add-on to our comprehensive plan. Uh, it actually shows this area right on the edge, uh, in between light industrial with, to the west and commercial to the east.
Yes.
So.
But this parcel itself was not.
This parcel was, you know, those, without being able to see the parcel lines on the subarea plan, which you can't, this area was so close that I include both of them. I think it's probably right on the very edge. I think this parcel is probably all light industrial and that eastern boundary of the parcel is probably commercial.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it, I didn't want to, I'd say like, yeah, it seemed like in the staff report, kind of like, oh, yeah, it's fine for this land use and stuff. Um, but I didn't know how big of a change it is really from that light industrial to this land use. Because, I mean, it seems like this is going to be a pretty large traffic generator, um, for the area. And I don't know that a light industrial use would necessarily generate as much traffic as this one.
It could.
Okay.
Light industrial could, uh, and not just the amount of traffic, but it could be, uh, light industrial could generate a lot of, uh, heavy truck traffic as well. So, uh, and that's, that's very relevant if you look at the, uh, Quick Trip Travel Plaza down there. How many trucks are, that's not, all, all those trucks aren't just coming off of I thirty five. A lot of them will be coming down one hundred ninety first street.
So I, I may have one follow-up question to your, uh, to your question. So if this were to be approved tonight and the development doesn't move forward, the zoning stays as is, correct?
The, the zoning would stay as is, but that zoning is connected to the development plan. So, so if this project does not proceed, yes, it will still have the zoning classification of a planned development, but it will not, uh, the one thing that can go there is a, this final development plan. So that, that zoning is, is directly attached, the, sorry, the preliminary development plan and the final development plan are directly attached to the zoning. Does that make sense?
It doesn't.
Yeah, we've had questions before.
Or we would see another development plan and preliminary class. We would see all of that, of course, in the, within the nature of the process. However, and this is a big what if, but it's a question that I feel like we need to ask. If the development doesn't occur, then this parcel of land is now CP three zoning.
Yes, but it would have, any other development that is not following this development plan would have to come back in with the rezoning.
Got it, okay, Per, that clarifies my, my question, yeah, thank you, sorry.
You're good. Said the, and then just for applicant, you said the proposed capacity is, is six hundred students, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Approximately.
Yeah, uh, we won't achieve that until, uh, ten years from now.
Yeah. Um, that's all, all the questions I have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to just add a little bit of information. I think, so Will's explanation was right up there as far as access spacing, what we're dealing with there. It's not unusual when we're dealing with, uh, in filled sites, you just can't, uh, space in areas that you would. And as far as the turn lanes, uh, the traffic study did analysis. I don't disagree with the analysis that, that from a numbers standpoint, uh, turn lanes are needed. Uh, my perception is that, um, from a safety perspective, uh, that, that is why we recommend putting in both red and white. As you can imagine, there's a lot of traffic in the area. The latest counts we took were three years ago and we had about fifteen percent of the heavy traffic of those trucks, uh, of typical original, you might see two, maybe three percent. So if anything, since twenty twenty two, you know, things probably got worse, not, not bad. So again, that was our perspective on that requirement.
Yeah, I think, I think the traffic study, I think it said it was about like twenty-five percent trucks or something up there currently in the peak hour. But it could be. I, say my, I guess my opinion, like I, I don't, I don't know if it's a great location for a school, honestly. And then you throw on top of that, that it was, you know, the comp plan says light industrial. I think that's, I don't know if I'm, I'm on board with the rezoning, but I, say I'm one person, so. I think, I think.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind clarifying one thing on the, something?
Yeah, sure.
I just, I wanted to make sure that, that you all, um, again, Kevin Lee with Paul Sennelly. Uh, on the zoning question, I, I think one piece that was lost there may have been was that, as it stands today, we could do this use by right, um, under the ag zoning with the exception of the one parcel that was, that was just annexed. We're having to rezone that. And so that's, that is the sole reason that we are, are driving the, the rezoning. Our thought was to include the entirety of the property in that because I think there's some question, um, as to the ability to use, if it's truly a vocational school, I, I don't know that that's the right, um, characterization of it based on how it's defined in your code. Um, but that is the only use that we're, is proposed on site that would require the, the C three zoning. Um, otherwise, school up to six hundred is allowed in, in ag, I believe, as I understand it. So I did want to clarify that. And then I, I wanted to make it abundantly clear if it wasn't before that we are committed, even though the, the traffic study says neither are warranted. We, we hear Tim's point and we are a hundred percent agreeable to doing the right intern lane with phase one. It's just the, the left turn lane, we would ask be deferred out. I think we're talking about nine trips, um, i- in the AM peak hour or something like that. And so it's, if there are safety concerns, it's hard to imagine that that level of, of trips is adding to those. Um, and then on the, uh, the sidewalk thing, I think that, that makes more sense now that we had talked about, um, the payment. Um, our, our request would still be that that payment can be made later. Um, it's, as you can imagine, it's a not-for-profit fundraising component that makes this unique and so cost is, is an issue everywhere. And so, um, I, I think we're all on the same page that it doesn't make sense to build that now. Um, but to the extent that we, that the commission was agreeable to deferring that payment until later, um, that would be appreciated as well. Thank you. Thank you.
I guess my question then is, what's the, is there a need to get the zoning done now versus a later phase of a vocational school would be built? I'm just, why, why are we being asked to approve something that may not happen in the future and maybe just do it anyways? With the current zoning, excluding the locations, we could go do phase one.
Yeah.
Well, but.
Well, with, with the current zoning.
Yeah, so, uh, again, this par, uh, the three parcels that make up this development site. With, uh, the southern parcel that, uh, provides the entrance drive into the facility and also has the stormwater sitting on it, uh, that's zone R U R, which is rural residential. The top two parcels, which make up about twenty acres of the site, is zone ag. However, uh, the preliminary development plan is what depicts what type of, uh, and also the building type is what depicts why this has to go to the, the CP three. The attorney came up and spoke for the school is, is not wrong with the six hundred student. However, this, uh, the size of the site, uh, it really, the prominent civic, uh, building type fits within that and that's what, that is not allowed within ag. Prominent civic, uh, is the, why it needs to go to the CP three. So that's why, uh, everything, the zoning is tied to the preliminary development plan. That's the overall site, not just the first phase.
Okay, I'm jumping in. Hello. So a tricky thing for you all is looking at code seventeen oh three. That's kind of your guidelines for considering these things and the kinds of factors that you can consider as commissioners. One of the tricky things that is not within those elements that can't factor into your decision and maybe it goes to staff to be concerned about that is finances. So whether, how much it's going to cost, the applicant is not your concern legally. So that's something that they can talk to staff about, but that's just not you guys. Okay.
So sorry. Uh, so number three in our report as, uh, under the final development plan and final plat, it, it identifies the left and right turn as we've indicated. I believe the applicant is, well, let me be more specific. It not only identifies the left and right turn, but it states that it should be built in phase one. The applicant is asking for that to be pushed into a separate phase. I think I understood that correctly, right?
That is what they have, uh, requested.
The left be pushed, just the left.
I'm so sorry, thank you for the clarity.
Yes, not both, just one.
Correct, thank you. Um, and so now my question. Do we specifically identify the phase? Or does that, is that item left open-ended for it to be approved at some point in the future? For the specific left turn request?
Keep it vague if you want this to be something that staff has conversations with the applicant about. You're not required, you guys aren't required to name a specific phase unless you have one in mind that you would like to add for some reason.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So if we said the, you know, the next final development.
Continue phases and remember, yeah.
Okay.
I also think though that it's the city engineer's opinion that the left turn lane should be as part of a phase one.
Right.
Per. Thank you for that clarity.
There's a lot of different parts to this one, so I'll help out when we get to the voting.
I just, I just, I'm just not, I'm not a fan of the site plan, just not including the field. It just, it seems like it's kind of a necessary item for a school to have that. You know, just to.
And that's where the special ed conference.
No, they had the playground in phase one.
Yeah.
But it wasn't like.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking what they, I think if they.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Who's to say the plans need to be changed to help, to change the future, or come back and say, we're going to shift phase forward. What's that doing else?
Yeah, I, I.
So then, so then the question, why would we improve the whole file development plan?
That's, that's, I just want, I just want there to be enough thought and going.
We're not.
Yeah.
Sorry. If we approve it, if, if we move forward.
Yes, as long as, as, as long as it's in substantial compliance with that, that's great. Yeah. So that's, I just want to make sure there's enough thought and care in selecting this property for the school so that, you know, it's, kids can have a, open field to play here on ten, twenty, thirty, forty years from now when the school is, is healthy, thriving and doing really well. That's what I want, I want to see this school be successful. I just don't want it to be, you know, hey, we had twenty-five acres, it's pretty close to our current location, you know, so it wouldn't be too disruptive to our current students to go to a different location where a different location might be more well-suited for a school that's going to generate a lot of traffic in the morning and the PM and, you know, just maybe have some more flexibility with the site to be able to meet, meet entrance, you know, access and, um, you know, just, I don't know, just be, be a little bit better at the site, I guess.
And this is always a.
A lot of parking lot, a lot of building.
Yeah, this is always a diff- difficult decision when you're talking about long range.
Yeah.
Ten years plans, uh, trying to nail down a plan. If there are significant changes, we will require them to come back.
We're talking about this, Eric, right?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
The other, the other point I'd like to make is, uh, that they were requesting that the, uh, left end be built later or to, uh, not be specific on, on the first phase. If, if you do decide to take that out, allow them to build that in a different phase, I'd like to put that condition, I'd like to take that condition off of them. Excuse me. I'd like to take that condition off the final development plan and place it on the preliminary development plan, guys. Because again, it's very specific in nature, it came from the city engineer as a, as a requirement. So that's why we put on the final development plan and said that it has to be built within the first phase. But again, you know, whatever you guys decide, if you do decide to take it off of the first phase, let's put it on the preliminary development plan. And I don't know how we're going to go back and then do that once we.
Yeah, right.
That makes sense.
But that's what we had.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
We can cater whatever you guys end up choosing, we can make that clear in your motion.
Can the, can preliminary plat be approved, but the final development plan plat be denied modifications? Because what we're, I'm talking out loud here, I mean, that's public, but, uh, what we're talking about here is either asking them to rearrange and make for a larger play area or deny as submitted. If, because your point is very well taken. It is a lot of, it's a beautiful concept, I support the idea.
And, yeah, let me make a comment to that. So when you, the preliminary development plan is. So when you, the preliminary development plan is, yes, it's laid out on paper, but it's, it's really a concept. So again, if they just, if they change things around, there's a little bit of flexibility in that. You know, with this, with this site, with the preliminary development plan. The final development plan, as I mentioned earlier, it doesn't show the, the special ed building on it. So for the final development plan, you're looking at that development plan. That is, that is very specific. So if you, you will have the opportunity at a future date to take, to relook at this site. And to determine whether or not you want to move or request that those buildings be moved. In order to provide that, that play, that additional playground along the east side. And I could see where they, they could work with, work with us as, work with the city to say, you know, maybe that tech building can go down. That first rider refusal property if they obtain that. Not a bad location.
Well, and that, so that's why I asked the question. Thank you for that clarity.
Sure.
Because we could obviously move forward with the concept. But, but then look at the final. We, we'd want to see some, some changes.
Well, again, the final. Again, the, yeah, again, the final is what was presented to you tonight. And it does show that big, large open area that, that Austin was talking about. So, you know, when they decide to continue further with this development, there is an opportunity again to relook at things. Relook at the, and relook at the entire site if you want.
There, there's a lot of this in the future.
Yeah.
And I think the idea we can see, we've worked with the land that we have to fit our vision. And if that first ride refusal comes available, that may be an option to rearrange things to fit better. But they were trying to just fit it within twenty-five acres.
Yeah.
And, and the size of the building dictates all of the, and obviously the, the zoning, the parking, the number of spaces. So while we're seeing a lot of parking spaces in a large building, those are really built, no pun intended, around the code. However, if we as a commission would like to see a different concept for the final play. You know, for, for example, if we thought that that special education building, which I know is not there. But that's, I'm just using as point of reference. That location on the plat, if we thought it should be larger and the applicant should work with the city to make that larger. Is that even part of our process of approval?
Based on your concerns and comments tonight, we will be working with them in the future on how, their future layout and design.
I don't know if that changes anything.
I mean, the other thing I can ask is, is the size is something that, that teachers should be taking into consideration for private business.
And that, and that's, that's why I asked the question, it's a fair.
Education, education, that's private education.
True.
So they can choose to design how they want. And if they don't have another play area, your kids' parents are going to recognize that for their, their business.
Uh, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's fair.
That's very valid. So.
And you see that adjusted even. But also if they don't have enough space, they could, this is a recommendation by them.
Makes sense. Yeah. Yeah, but that's a fair point.
So, so I have, maybe this is a final question as we prepare. Within the final development and final, I'm sorry, final development plan and plat, the, the conditions, there are five points that are listed. The gate access. Is that number four? Or should we?
The, referring to the condition that Bob was talking about earlier.
That's, that's correct.
That really needs to go on the preliminary development plan.
Yes.
Because the stub, while shown on the preliminary development plan, would, is not shown on the final development plan. And so wouldn't necessarily be built now. Plus, the traffic impact study needs to be updated for the whole project to not have access for the general public to that eastern stub. So it's really a preliminary development plan issue.
And so, and I'm, I'm just preparing for a motion.
Put that as number three. If you were to want that in general, it would go under the two, the rezoning and the preliminary development plan. Those are things that you guys aren't the final decision makers on. These are things that you only recommend.
Yes.
So that would go popped into number three if that's something that you want there. And then everything else is your final decision maker tonight.
Yes. So the rezoning, if, again, just for clarity, if, as we're preparing for any motion. We need to add point three, which is the gate referred to what we're looking.
The staff recommendation is being, is being modified to have a point three. And if you agree with that, that lumps into those two, the rezoning and the preliminary development plan. Because you are not the final decision maker on that tonight.
Correct, okay. I think I'm prepared. I'll make a motion. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan to rezone twenty-five acres from county R U R, rural residential. And A agriculture districts to CP three planned heavy commercial district for a private school subject to the following conditions. Items one and two listed in the staff report, but I'm adding a third item, which is the access point stub to the east shall be gated and for emergency access only.
I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Combs and a second by Commissioner Lansbergh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? Motion carries three to one. To the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion. Planning Commission approves the preliminary plat with the condition that approval of the plat is contingent on the governing body approving the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Sosa. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries three to one. And the final development, or, yeah, final development plan and final plat.
I'll make a motion. The planning commission approves the final development plan and final plat provided the following conditions are met. Items one through five listed in the staff report.
Second.
Just, just to clarify that, that's the left and right, you want the left and right turn in the first phase?
Yes. All right, it's fair. Okay, so, motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Lansbergh. All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries three to one. Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Can I get Commissioner Bonnersman?
All right, moving to regular agenda, item number three, New Trails North Third Plat. This is the Staybridge and Holiday Inn Suites rezoning. And this is also a public hearing item, and that's also the preliminary development plan and the final development plan. Do we have the applicant here for presentation? Oh, rest. Okay. All right. Is the applicant not here?
Uh, no.
Okay.
They are. And the applicant, the developer's out of taxes and the applicant's engineer is going through some health issues right now, so. This is item number three, New Trails North Lot Seven, for a dual brand hotel, Staybridge and Holiday Inn Suites. It's for rezoning, preliminary and final development plan. The applications before you today are for, again, for rezoning, preliminary development plan, final development plan. And are specifically for a new four-story, one hundred and twenty-eight room dual brand hotel. It's located on the south side of New Trails Circle, north of New Trails Parkway, which is basically located at the south, southeast intersection, one hundred and seventy-fifth street and I thirty-five. The approximately, the property is approximately three point two acres and is part of the New Trails North Commercial Development. The, to the north of the, of the property is vacant commercial ground and a convenience store. To the east and south is vacant commercial land and is adjacent to the Southern Star National, Natural Gas Pipeline. This development will, just as clarification, this development will need an encroachment agreement in order to have their south parking lot and possible cross access with the land to the south. This will be one of the conditions of approval on this. And again, to the west is I thirty-five. The dual brand hotel chains that make up these applications are Staybridge and Holiday Inn Express.
Hotels.
The proposed hotel is totaling approximately twenty-three thousand square feet. And again, it will consist of twenty-eight rooms, hundred, hundred and twenty-eight rooms. The landscape plan showed here is provided above the minimum required landscape plant materials to, to be installed on the site for the land development code. They have added additional planning materials to help break up the large amount of parking on this site. I do apologize for this landscape plan. It's a little hard to see because it is a fairly large site. They have concentrated landscape along the perimeter of the site to screen their parking areas and mechanics, especially along the New Trails Circle. This is elevation showing the, showing the west side elevation of the four-story hotel, which is considered the backside of the structure. So kind of unusual, the backside of the hotel is actually facing New Trails Circle. And these are the side elevations, showing the north and south side elevations. The north elevation will be most visible from one hundred and seventy-fifth street. They have provided a lot more variation in color material on the north side. And this is the front side, which is the east elevation, the main entrance of the hotel. And as you can see from the elevations, the developer has broken up the long walls, very similar to kind of like what I mentioned with the school. The offsets, with offsets, different materials and colors. The main structure material along all facades are colored ephes, stone and brick. This property is consistent with the character of the area and proposed plan is in line with other recent developments to the I thirty-five and one hundred and seventy-fifth street subarea plan. The architecture and building design along the overall final development plan are in substantial compliance with the code. They do have one deviation request for parking along a building facade. The code states that you need eight feet width on the sidewalk and they're proposing five. They've enhanced landscape around the building and perimeter of the site. The staff feels that this is an adequate trade-off for the reduction in the sidewalk width. Site also has a constraint of the Southern Star Gas Line, which severely limits the amount of width that they have in the lot as well. Staff recommends approval of the, of the deviation.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Okay.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing, same rules as before. If anyone would wish to speak, you have three minutes for an individual, seven minutes for a group. Please remember to state your name and address for the public record.
Hello, my name is Blaze Berman. I live at two five one one two West one hundred and seventy-seven Terrace. On the map, this is basically my backyard. So a little frustrating to see that they want to put a hotel directly in my backyard purely based off of the size of it. The way that I look at it is kind of frustrating is probably the best word I would use purely because, I mean, if I'm looking at my backyard, I'm going to see a giant hotel. That is now going to block everything. I understand that we purchased our home in a commercial zone where they were going to be able to build commercial areas. My only issue with it is, is the fact that the crime that typically comes with hotels as well, as well as traffic. I don't know if anybody ever frequents over in that area, but the road that we have typically probably won't do super great with that amount of volume and vehicles that are traveling. And especially with commercial vehicles, only having one turn-in on that side during that time period is going to frustrate a lot of us, I think. Just wanted to voice our opinions as a small community of a neighborhood. We've talked to quite a few of other neighbors and everything's, we're all in agreement. It's kind of rough to be able to have a hotel in our backyard. Just wanted to get that point across and that's all I have for you, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing that no one is approaching the podium, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Sosa, second by Commissioner Bonnersman. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, motion carries five to zero. Okay, we'll now move into commissioner discussion. It's a little frustrating that the applicant is not here to answer questions. We'll start on my, on my right this time.
Chairman Juneman, we're not sure why they're not here, but if there are questions or issues that you think they need to address, you always have the right to continue the side off. We, at this point, do not have a December meeting, so it would, it would be continuing it to January. So just keep those things in mind and because, and if you decide to continue it, if you wanted to reopen the public hearing, you could at a future meeting, but you would not have to.
Okay, thank you for that, for that context. I guess we'll kind of see where discussion or questions, if we feel like we need to do that. Seems like a decent approach to me. You guys think so?
I, I have maybe one silly question. I mean, I travel a lot, maybe I don't realize this, but this is clearly one hotel, right? I look, everything that I've looked at is one hotel. When we read Staybridge and Holiday Inn Suites are these, is that just because they're owned by the same company, they own each other?
No, as mentioned in the staff report, it's considered a dual brand.
Correct.
Which basically means one half will be the Holiday Inn Express.
All right.
The other half will be the Staybridge.
All right, so that's what I, fault I read, but.
It's not a silly question.
Very silly question. Okay. It would be great if the applicant's here.
Is Staybridge, is that typically like an extended stay or?
I, I can't remember if it's an extended stay, but I do know it's, it's a little higher level than the Holiday Inn Express.
It's an extended stay hotel technically.
Thank you very much.
I feel like, my personal opinion, we have. I feel like, my personal opinion, uh, we had a member of the community show up. I feel like the application would be heard and I might recommend that as we can obviously continue it, but I would want to make sure we have the opportunity for another public hearing to give.
Yeah, I might be able to address the question, uh, or concern from the, uh, the neighbor who came up and spoke. Uh, this
Sure.
this development was, uh, rezoned to commercial back in tw- twenty-twenty. Uh, the overall, both the villas and the estates, pretty trace, which is the residential side, along the north and west side of Nutrell's Parkway, which is a very wide parkway, uh, was all scheduled for commercial out here. And specifically, they basically labeled this as a hotel site back during that presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this isn't really something that's new to you guys because you weren't here back in twenty-twenty, but, uh, it's been kind of slated for that type of development.
Do you know, are they limited by height by, because of the airport proximity?
So they will need to go before the, uh, New Century Airport Board and the county commissioners. Uh, so, uh, back when the rezoning happened and, you know, we, uh, uh, you know, the Treadway Apartments, which are at the southern end of this kind of side of, uh, Nutrell's Parkway, uh, had to be reviewed and approved by both the New Century Airport Commission and also the Board of County Commissioners. So, uh, with these new structures, yes. And I'm guessing that the county will say, yeah, we need to bring this to their attention.
I'd rather like to see the applicant. It's my, my personal.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. I mean, it's unfortunate they had health issues that you can't control, but it'd be great to see them. So we, I think we would table this to our, to our December meeting. Do we need to set, do we need to say the date at that?
So you would have to
Or, or sorry.
Motion like your usual motions you make. So if you do that and it passes and we could move it sixty days without the consent of the applicant, but if it's gonna be more than sixty days, which based on no December meeting, it would technically be right over sixty days. We would have to get consent from the applicant to just move it to what, whenever the January meeting is. So, if for some odd reason, the applicant is like, oh, I don't, I don't consent to this, we would have to meet and consider it in December. And that could be like on Zoom or whatever, but as long as it fulfills the requirements of COMA, the Public Meetings Act, we can still hold it. Anyway, all of this to say, we have to ask consent from the applicant to move it to the January meeting as well.
Thank you for that clarity. I'm, I'm willing to even meet in December if that helps. If, if it happens. Uh, I'll, I'll make a, I'm sorry, before I make a motion, is, are we, uh, can, is it continuing? Continue, all right. I'll make a motion, uh, to continue this item, number three, for the Nutrell's North Third Plat to either December or January meeting, depending on applicant's consent.
Seth, do we want them to go ahead and do it to the January?
Yeah, if you would like to say it specifically so we could tell the applicant when it's gonna be heard next.
Yeah, I'll, I'll revise the motion to continue item number three for Nutrell's North Third Plat to the January meeting.
It's January twenty-sixth.
January twenty-twenty-sixth meeting.
No, twenty-sixth.
January twenty-sixth. Oh, my goodness. Uh, to the January twenty-sixth meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Bonnersmith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, abstentions, motion carries five to zero. Um, that is the end of our regular agenda. We have three discussion items from staff.
We provided in your packet both a red line and a clean copy of some proposed amendments to chapters one through three of Title Seventeen. And what we're doing is going chapter by chapter, maybe not in order, to make proposed revisions. So this is the beginning of something that will probably take over a year, just depending on workload and timeframe and things like that. So we thought this might be a good place to start. They are more general, um, process areas of the code. So I wanted to just go through the high-level changes, see if there's any questions, and then we would not bring this back to you until at least the January meeting, based on any feedback that you may have, that Catherine would have from a legal perspective as well. Chapter one is the general provisions chapter. There's just very few changes to this section or this chapter. They include rolling back deadlines from four P.M. to noon. Um, on the day of the deadline, that's more of an internal process thing for us, and modifying the language related to the Board of Zoning Appeals officers to be consistent with that of the Planning Commission and allow the, the Planning Commission Chairman and Vice Chairman to also serve in that capacity for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Just more cleanup, if you will, in chapter one. Chapter two is definitions and we are proposing to modify a few definitions to provide greater clarification. Um, for example, accessory building and accessory use, making sure that it's clear. There's a little bit of, uh, opportunity to make sure that it, what an accessory use can be in an accessory building, for example. So I just, minor modifications, I'm probably making it more convoluted than I should in my explanation. What we're really focusing on with, in the definitions is annex, is adding several. When we've been talking about deviations versus variance, for example, or what is a principal use? Um, and then also even something as simple as what does annexation mean? If terms are not defined in the code, then we automatically go back to just a standard Webster's dictionary. So there are certain times that we want to define terms to make sure that they're specific for what we are working with and doing. So that's the, several proposed new additions to the definitions section. And then chapter three, in applications and procedures, we are adding a section related to discovery meetings. In the code, there's a pre-application meeting and we actually are recommending and have been trying to do this already, it, but have what we term a discovery meeting with applicants before they spend money on a traffic study or full engineering drawings. Um, it's more conceptual, what are the high-level issues that may come up? And they may decide to obviously pursue it, or they may say, mm, not the right property, I'll look elsewhere. So we want to codify that. The next two items that I pointed out here, the posting of signs and mailing of notices, relate to our public notice requirements. Right now, staff is doing all of, both of those things. Um, the posting of signs, it does say that the applicant's gonna do it and we're proposing to provide greater direction for those, placement of those signs and start requiring them to, to actually do that rather than us post the signs. With respect to the mailing of notices, staff has been providing, doing that process in terms of drafting the letter, paying for the postage, making sure we meet the deadline. And we are proposing to shift that responsibility from the staff to the applicant. We've looked around at several other communities and it, while there is a mix, the majority do require the applicant to take that responsibility. We found that in our expiration timeframes, that our preliminary plats are only good for eighteen months, where our preliminary development plans, final development plans and final plats are all good for two years. So, not to cause any confusion, it's nice to have them all a standard two years. And then the last two items, again, relate to sort of consistent language and cleanup of some of the language relative to incomplete applications and continuances. Open it up for questions. Obviously, I'll probably send you like I did with the bylaws, sort of a, a middle-of-the-road email, hey, do you have any other thoughts, um, as we proceed forward? And then we will in the future give you an idea of how we're going to tick off some of these other chapters. Some we won't be able to take in a group because of the scope of them, but when we can do them in bunches, it does help. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one very simple question, I hope. So the, this is unique to posting of signs. So very much like mailing of the notices, there was some proof, right, that it had. Obviously, you can see a sign if it's where it needs to be. However, isn't it, or would it be staff or someone's responsibility to ensure that signs were properly posted? Or how can we be sure that the applicant's doing what
Right.
obviously staff would have done before?
Sure.
Unique to signs, sorry.
Unique to signs, um, what we have done is drafted an affidavit and require photographic proof in today's technology. Take a photograph, it was installed. They would have to visit and have a notarized statement saying, I visited the day of the meeting or the day before the meeting, the sign was still up. Um, we have not necessarily been following up as a staff. We, we put it up and we put it up where it should be. But making sure that it stays up is important. And so we did include, if it is, if, if they, in the affidavit, if the sign is no longer there, they need to let us know and get one back right up there.
And, and so I saw that, uh, and this is one of the reasons why I was looking to maybe get clarity, is with the mail pieces, there was a period of time in which they had to provide proof of such.
Mm-hmm.
And I saw that, yes, there's a photograph, but is there any time limit that I overlooked or a specific time period that they need to abide with?
Are you, with respect to posting of the signs?
Correct.
Okay, there, there is a deadline by which the sign has to be posted, just like the letters have to be postmarked so many days ahead of the meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm uniquely talking about to the photograph. So when they take a photograph and say, yeah, I did, I know I'm splitting hairs here, I'm just, just curious about, when they take the photograph, is it, do they have four days, five days to get that to the Secretary of the Planning Commission, very much like the mailed reports or?
I think we're gonna want the, the, the photograph and the affidavit relative to the sign closer to the day of the meeting.
Gotcha.
So.
And again, I, that's all I have.
No, that's okay.
I was just curious how we're gonna make sure they're
Yeah.
doing what they're doing.
Well, and oftentimes, we will hear from neighbors if the sign disappears.
Of course.
And you don't know who caused it or how it disappeared. It could be wind, but sometimes they do disappear.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And then for the mailing notices, you add a message in it. I'm assuming it would be required that it be certified lettered.
Yes.
So they provide a list of all the addresses of the certified sign.
Exactly. Right now, we have been mailing them first class. We have been requiring them to provide the list of who it needs to be. They obviously will continue to have to do that, but in order to ensure it was mailed, postmarked on time, they would have to be sent certified. And so that will cost them additional.
Um, so I, actually, that raises one final question.
Mm-hmm.
I promise. The list that they obtained, did I overlook? Are they, to, so when they, obviously, the applicant is going to be, uh, sending the mailings. Do we provide the list?
No.
It's their responsibility to determine
Yes, and there's a couple ways they can do that. They can either go through a title company who will provide, they're, they're required to do it either two-hundred feet from
Correct.
their property or a thousand, depending in the city or in the county. So they can either go through a title company to get that information or you can go through Johnson County Records and Tax Administration Office.
Yep.
On Ames, it's relatively easy to do if you know what you're doing, so.
Absolutely, perfect.
And that would be a cause, if it was done incorrectly, that would be a cause for an item to be continued.
Okay, and that's really where, where I'm going. If we were to identify that timeframes weren't met, certain applicants weren't, or I'm sorry, residents weren't notified, obviously, those would be issues that
Yeah.
we could address.
But what's the, what's the checks to make sure that they notified the proper people? You know, the, the list was accurate, how, how do we verify that they did that correctly?
We, we don't necessarily double-check it, but we may do some spot checking, even today, with them providing the mailing list. Obviously, it has to be to the property owner and not to the resident, so taking a quick look and doing some spot checking is, is how we would continue to do that.
No other questions?
Okay, well, there's no vote required tonight. It's just more of good questions and we'll be prepared at a future meeting.
So as of today, there's no December meeting then?
As of today, we have not received any applications, so unless there is an issue with the item that you continued, we would not see you in December. And if we do see you in December, it would be on a Tuesday again because we do not want to have meetings the week of Christmas. So it would be, um, the sixteenth on a Tuesday if we do see you. And we'll, we'll get information, we'll talk to the applicant as soon as we can tomorrow, hopefully, and make, and let you know as soon as we know. Yeah. If you want me to keep rolling on in terms of the agenda?
Yeah, please.
Um, last night, the plant, the city council considered all of your items that were on your October agenda. Those included the Four Corners, the Meadows of Aspen Creek, the School District Elementary School and the School District Service Center. And I'm missing something. Um, oh, and the Hilltop Ridge. And all of those were approved as you all approved them. There was good discussion, there were neighbors that came to that meeting as well, but those are all hopefully moving forward now. Last item, and it's not too late, so I'll try to make it quick anyway, is continuing with our idea of some education or orientation opportunities. We staff developed a list of common terms or that we thought might be helpful in terms of what they mean or maybe a refresher for some people. So some terms may be obvious, others may have a unique nuance because they're more planning, land use-related. If you've got questions, stop in the process and we can talk about them. First, we talked about a little, uh, city council versus governing body. Obviously, city council, there's five elected council members and the governing body includes the mayor. This is more important for them in terms of when the mayor votes on things and when they don't and I did, and when he doesn't. And I did include here, Kansas State statute does define what a governing body is. They don't define what a city council is. And so it really relates to what the, the mayor votes on or doesn't. Sort of a little quirky thing, but I thought you might be interested. Um, you'll sometimes hear applicants refer to a plan when they really mean plat or a plat when they really mean site plan. So the subdivision plat is where they are dividing the property into lots. It's a legal document, it's recorded with the county, it's prepar, prepared by an engineer or surveyor. Site plan is more, um, showing the development. It's the building footprints, the related improvements. They're both in, done by engineers, they're both to a scale, that's important. But it's the plat that allows for the sale of property or transfer of property. So we just wanted to make sure that, sometimes we'll jump in and tell, and say it's a plat and not a plan or, or whatever. Lot parcel tract, I, um, I thought this was interesting because we use all of those terms sometimes to describe land and they may be interchangeable. I like to think it, about it as the, the lot has been I like to think about it as the, the lot has been subdivided, so it, it's subdivided to create a lot. When, before it's been subdivided or platted, it, I like to think about it as a parcel. And the tract oftentimes is where you've got common space in a development for stormwater, or it, sometimes the access easement is in a tract. The term parcel describes land that may or may not be subdivided. So, that, that, it's sort of nuances, but it's, it's, they can also be interchangeably used. So, that's a little different than the plan versus plat. Zoning versus land use, oftentimes, the public is concerned about, is confused about this. Zoning relates to how, the regulations, the police power of how a property can be used and what regulations it must come under. Land use, it could be future land use, it could be existing land use, but how the land, or sometimes the building, is occupied. We might talk about land use like single-family. Well, we also have a single-family zoning district, but you can have commercial use and you would have zoning that allows specific types of commercial uses. It's probably not gonna be generic enough that it says any commercial use, 'cause that can be such a broad brush. So, the zoning also relates to how the, the development regulations, setbacks, building heights. So, those are some of the differences, if you will, in terms of, and that one's more as a refresher, because we'll get people talking about the zoning when, when they really mean land use. Well, the, the comprehensive plan says it's zone this. No, it's, the comprehensive plan is land use and it doesn't change the zoning, so. Okay, then, this is another little nuance. We have our future land use designations or existing land use designations. And then we have how the property's used. And so, I put some examples. In the comprehensive plan, we have low-density, medium-density, and residential, or high-density residential. And in the use table, we have group care home or household living. And so, there's, the land use designations are more higher level, if you will, and the use table gets into retail small, retail heavy, or those, retail warehouse even sometimes to the different sizes or levels of uses. We refer to part of our code as form-based code as opposed to Euclidean. Euclidean is just a little fun fact, maybe, derived from a nineteen twenty-six U.S. Supreme Court case from Euclid, Ohio versus Ambler Realty. That's how they came up with Euclidean zoning, zeros in on specific land uses, and it, and typically assigns buildings or land a single use. They, they wanted to separate at that time industrial from residential. Form-based, as opposed, encourage the mixing of uses and focuses more on the form of the building, and that's why we talk about the building type and the frontage type in, in terms of how it relates to its surroundings. Our code is a hybrid. We have elements that are form-based relating to, like I said, the, the street types, frontage types, and deviations to make something comply with code or better versus we also allow straight zoning like we had last month for Four Corners, where it was single-family, it was not a planned development, and they had to meet lot width, minimum lot size, for Permitted use versus conditional use. Permitted use is allowed without any special approvals. We had conditional use this evening, and that was the cell tower. So, it required an additional level of design review. Is it compatible with its surroundings? We can include conditions of approval, and it, the review is actually similar to a rezoning in terms of you're making a recommendation, it goes to city council, and they are approving a conditional use by ordinance versus something that's permitted by right, they may be able to go straight to a site plan. Or if it's an existing building, they might be able to move into the building without any review or approval. I won't go through all of these, but there's specific review criteria for conditional uses. It's slightly different than rezoning, but there are some sort of overlap because they're looking at how it fits with the area. And it's more focused on that particular use, such as the cell tower, and the potential impact to the surrounding area. Temporary uses, probably pretty obvious, short period of time, after the use is over, they return the site to its previous condition. Here's some examples that we see, and there are, for several of these, there are a temporary use permit that's required, and that's an administrative thing. Here's the criteria, here's the criteria, and if it complies, staff can issue a temporary use permit in most cases. I think one, trying to remember if we, we probably talked a little bit about this with the border zoning appeals versus Planning Commission. Variance is border zoning appeals, that must meet all five criteria, deviation, more flexible. The, I think that's easy enough to go through. I included appeal versus variance because both of these are board of zoning appeals. Actions, appeals are not common, they're filed when an applicant disagrees with a decision that was made by the director. Based on planned zoning, allowing for a more flexible application, we don't see very many variances, and we see even fewer appeals, I would tell you. There are other boards, the Board of Building Code Appeals, you are not, so don't worry about that. That relates to building, electric, fire, mechanical, those building code issues. So, administrative adjustments versus Planning Commission versus staff. There are some things that staff can do. We have much, we're much more limited in granting administrative site plans, for example. You can see if the setback is being modified or maybe increased by ten percent or less, that's something staff could approve. If it's greater than that, then the adjustment would have to come to you all as part of either a site plan or a planned development. And there's criteria. We like to have criteria for everything, gives us the guidelines of how to make those.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, a quick question. Could you go back to one slide? So, Planning Commission, bottom left, my screen, reducing the site, open space requirement up to twenty percent, would that apply tonight to the special ed location that we were talking about? I'm just trying to apply that to a real-life example, we don't have to debate.
Or the, if we discuss the hotel, could Planning Commission, any recommendations to reduce it to three floors versus four? I'm guessing object, that's absolutely twenty-five percent. It could change?
Well, it's usually, in your example, there you wanna go taller.
Yeah.
So, you would not be able to go from three to four because that's of the greater percentage. It's usually, it's more a, the number of feet. If the maximum, it's not going from three to four floors. If, if the maximum height is forty feet and they wanna go twenty percent greater of forty feet, you could do, you could potentially grant that. So, it's, it's, it's either the feet or the percentage. Like, if ten percent open space is required and they wanna go less than that, staff could grant nine percent.
I think you just put, okay, you clarified my question and the application of this because it would have to apply to the requirement of open space, at least in my example.
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's to very specific numerical requirements, whether they be a percentage or feet, or.
Wonderful. No, thank you for that, sorry.
Sure. Just a couple more, and they go pretty quick. The only thing I'm gonna say about a use variance is they're not allowed. Kansas State statute does not allow a use variance. And a use variance would be like, oh, I wanna put a nail salon in a single-family residential district. No. So, that's all you gotta know. Spot zoning, you hear that term every once in a while, can mean a lot of different things to different people. Sometimes, we, people like to throw that out there when it's, when they think the proposed zoning is incompatible, and it's usually for a small acreage of land. So, I wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily call the school spot zoning, number one, because it was commercial and you've got commercial around it, but let's say they were going for the, a residential district because they could develop the school in a residential district. That was twenty-five acres of land. That's not necessarily your one parcel that's two acres. And it's really relating to more not conforming. It might be a reason that you would not recommend rezoning because you consider it spot zoning. We don't hear that term as much as we used to, I don't think. Last one, promise. Grandfathered, that one gets thrown around a lot, too. It's really, it's called legal non-conforming. It was a legal use or a legal building that is now no longer conforming with the code because maybe it was, we annexed it and it complied in the county, but it doesn't comply with our regulations. Or when we get farther into the code and maybe we start making changes, probably won't do this, but making changes to our parking requirements, and a building had adequate parking, but we changed the requirement and made it more, we changed the code. So, that would be a legal non-conforming, because when it was built, it complied with the code. Claire is Mudd?
Yeah. That one's an easy one.
Good. That's it. Any questions? Any ideas of other things you'd like to hear about topic?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, last month, we approved the, recommended approval of rezoning for the elementary school.
Yes.
I was surprised that within a week, fences were up and grading started. So, can they start that type of development before the governing body approves rezoning?
And they can, and they can under certain circumstances. One, you have to be the property owner if it hadn't transferred to them. And two, they had to have, and they do have, a land disturbance permit. So, they had their silk fencing up and all of that. What we would not allow them to do, and we have not approved their public improvement plans, because they don't have their plat recorded. So, that was the case also with the other school property for their service center. They started, and we had some neighbors concerned, so, yeah.
Good question. I, I might just add not to that topic, but this topic. This review is very informative.
Good.
And I would just say thank you. And I don't know what it would take to, you know, have continued training, maybe not always at the end of a meeting.
Right.
Or even online. I'm talking about the future aspect of things, but this is extremely informative, and I would absolutely, you know, be interested in more of this kind of education.
That's good to know. I won't put you on the spot, but if there's certain topics you'd like to learn more about, let us know.
Yeah.
And if it, even if they're, you know, we had the city engineer here this evening, I'm sorry I didn't introduce him, but if you have questions, the, the traffic one-on-one, you know? Those types of, stormwater, one-on-one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna volunteer public work. But, and, and we will also start to get into comprehensive plan a little bit more, because we will be looking at and need to start doing a regular review of it. So, we're gonna be looking at it for amendments and bringing information to you to, to help you hopefully grow in your knowledge and make, always wanting you to make informed decisions.
Well, I think for me, to answer your question, I mean, I, I reference all of our codes, all of the tools, right, that, that we need to do this. One of the things that stood out to me was the slide that I asked you to go back to. And maybe the best way for me to get this out of my brain is, I wanna understand what the rails are that we actually have and should stay within. And I, and I know we all completely understand things like, we don't need to look at the finance side of things. We really need to stay to, you know, the land development code and the use of the land, those types of terms, all, I'm sure we're all well-bursted on. Uniquely, what I would be interested in knowing more of is, again, that slide that you showed me, where, or us, where we have, I'm trying not to use the word authority, but we have say and can impact open spaces and those types of deviations. Would that be the right way to say that?
Would it be helpful? And this may be more of a conversation of deviations in general, 'cause I know Chairman Sosa, you've also had some questions about deviations, and maybe that's something in the future of a roundtable discussion, if we had some topics or questions to start that.
No, I think that would be great. And not to belabor the point, but the one thing that I think we all look to fall back on, unique to deviations, is where did we do this before? And looking at key examples and yet having some level of precedence, 'cause I understand we want to be flexible, but it's, you know, to do the right things for a community, but at the same time, the codes, the code, and the guidelines, with the guidelines, and we set them for a reason. So, that would be a wonderful topic, I think, to, to have, yes, a roundtable discussion.
I agree. I hear what you're saying, and I won't belabor the point, I'm sorry. I hear what you're saying about setting precedence, and yes and no in terms of sometimes disagreement. Honestly, every property has uniqueness.
Of course.
And not really, but you can't compare this development with this development because they're both residential. Topography may be the issue or whatever, so.
You're exactly right, and it depends on the deviation request.
It's, it's, okay, okay.
So, if someone is saying, like tonight, the deviation of eight-foot sidewalks, they wanted it five, but they wanted three of shrubbery or landscaping, I'm not gonna really question and say, have we had precedents on that before? But if someone says, I don't wanna put that ACA-approved ramp on that side of the building, and they give some real justification as to why it should go somewhere else. Where, I know that's probably an extreme example, but where is the precedent in such a big deviation request that's not, you know, adding landscape to where concrete would be?
Okay.
And for me, the, the precedence, it's more about why we made that change. What was the thought process as to why we made that change? So, I think that's where it comes in, less about the, these are two residential properties we should treat them the same, but what was our thought process when we made this change over here so we could consider that, if we should think the same way, or if that was a crazy way to link back to your point?
That's fair. Thank you.
Yeah, I think kinda like when the Hundred and Ninety-Ninth Street developed the boards along R thirty-five, the truck board is, that would create conflict, right? Ask question, have we approved things that would have created conflict in the past?
Yes, yes.
I think we've done that in the past, and what's, what's the issue?
Absolutely. Can we?
Catch it?
I have no more questions. I mean, give me a minute. Give me, if we don't end this now.
Turn this.
Let's, let's, I'll entertain a motion, too, and you're.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Bonnishment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Questionary.